If I could get your attention and call this meeting to order, and thank you everyone for their attendance. We don't need one, I guess. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. We have Council Lady Kane had a death in the family and will not be here. Mrs. Henley is having a district meeting. She will be here in a few minutes. And I am required before we open the public hearing to read this letter by law. "In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session in the Virginia Beach City Council, Thursday, April 23, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at Green Run High School. The purpose of this special formal session is to conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2015/2016 resource management plan, including proposed tax increases in real estate, cigarettes, flat tax on transients obtaining lodging, and a motor vehicle license fee increase. We have scheduled Green Run High School to provide citizens a convenient location with adequate seating to express their concerns on the proposed fiscal year 2015/2016 budget. Sincerely, I've signed that." But we do welcome each and every one. We will hold to three minutes per speaker, and we'll be tight on that because we want to be fair to everyone, and everyone to have their opportunity to speak. And I wish I could tell you, I could see someone out here right now, but I don't know if y'all can see. I can't see a soul, they got the lights so bright. But when you get closer, I'm sure I'll be able to see you. But we welcome everyone, and we'll go ahead and get started. Ruth?
Yes, sir. Barbara Malati. The next speaker will be George Pilgrim.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Spohr. My approach to the proposed tax crease is not unique, but my rationale may be somewhat different from the prevailing arguments. I have heard the argument that the litmus test for employee needs can be measured by the number of applicants for the job currently held by those employees. It sounds logical. However, there is a fatal flaw. While we stack of applications may be towering, do we know who they are? Do we know their qualifications? Have they the training and the experience to do the job? Here's what we do know. We know the worth of the employees that we have. We know their capabilities. We've invested millions of dollars in their training, and we are comfortable with the security they provide us. Our homes and the education they provide our children. We know that when we call 911, our issues will be handled expeditiously by a professional, experienced firefighter or a police officer. We sleep well at night, knowing that these qualified city employees have our collective backs. We send our children to school, and we noted the nth degree possible that our children are receiving, what we were assured they would, and that's a world-class, 21st century education. But now let's look to the lens of the employee. Whether written or assumed, we made a deal with each and every one of these folks. We agreed that if they did what the citizens paid them to do, they would be taken care of in a manner steeped in fairness, and for the most part, they have been. Not one teacher, police officer, firefighter, or any city employee for that matter ever expected to get rich vis a vis their chosen occupation. Not one. But economic oppression beyond the scope of anyone's imagination has eroded the value of their take-home pay. Yet, every time the bell rings, they come out to the center of that metaphorical ring. Every time, they come out to the center of the ring. Is there trust nothing more than altruistic naivete? Members of council, this is not debatable. This is our obligation. I'm more than many of you realize that this is hard work. Now is the time for us to make those hard choices. Perhaps we cannot do everything that we would have done in a better economy, but we can do something, and I believe that each of us who benefit from their hard work should pay their fair share towards what is an honest return for honest work. Many of you were in attendance with me when we listened last year to Dr. Cook in his State of the Region, and he remarked, "The best return on investment we can make is in teachers and in education." During the height of the Depression in the early '30s, a fellow named Mip Harburg penned a song called "Brother, Can You Spare a Dime." It was not so much an expression of pessimism, but one of sheer disillusionment. The basic format is, "This is what I gave, and now this is what I get? But I deserve better. Help me out, man. Make that decision to do the right thing by those who have done the right thing for all of us." Thank you for listening.
Next speaker, please.
George Pilgrim and Terrence Riggs.
Ruth, could you just restate the name, please?
Yes. Terrence, George Pilgrim and Terrence Riggs.
Thank you.
George Pilgrim, Terrence Riggs.
Trenace.
Okay, it says Terrence.
Can you see me?
Barely. But it's good to see you. Glad to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members, and Mr. Spohr. I am Trenace Riggs, and I have the honor of serving as the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. On Saturday, I joined with nearly 2,000 teachers, parents, students, and concerned community members in Richmond to send a message to the General Assembly. That message is that they need to put kids first. We are here this evening with that same message. Locally, we must also put our kids first. We must protect the quality and reputation of our schools. Even though the General Assembly did include a 2% salary increase for the SOQ positions, we know that the budget they recently passed doesn't come close to restoring the funding that Virginia Beach and localities throughout Virginia has lost since 2007. The loss of funding from the state has forced the school board to make cuts like increasing class sizes merely just to balance the budget. Just today, I received a phone call, one of many I receive almost daily, from a middle school where certain classes will not be offered next year because of the cuts in personnel to teach them. Both the school board and yourselves, as members of City Council, have made employees' compensation a priority. I know that. I've been to your meetings. I've heard you speak. This is why the additional funding requested by the school board and some of the additional revenue in the city manager's proposed budget focuses on raising employee pay. I regularly hear from school employees who compare their pay stubs from six years ago to their current pay stubs and find they are taking home less money today than they were before. I hope you had a chance to read the email from the Virginia Beach teacher with seven years' experience that he sent you just this week. His email actually breaks the numbers down and shows how his increased cost for things like VRS, healthcare, and the lack of a meaningful raise has impacted his take-home pay. He, like many other teachers and other employees in the city and the school system, worked two and three jobs just to make ends meet. This is not acceptable if our goal is to attract top talent to our schools and keep them here. I taught in Virginia Beach for over 35 years. We have a reputation across the nation of having great schools. I know that the public values our schools. I also believe that the success of our schools is made possible by the talent, experience, and dedication of the people who serve our students. It is critical that you invest in them and reward them for their dedication. The quality and reputation of our schools depend on you doing so. Thanks so much.
Next speaker, please.
William Bailey and Stephen Johnson.
Could you repeat the names again, please, Ruth?
William Bailey and Steve Johnson.
Thank you.
Bill Bailey? I'll sing you a song.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm William Bailey, President, Virginia Beach Professional Firefighters. I speak before you this evening to ask you to provide the city and school employees a 5% pay raise that we believe that they deserve. When you take a look at the money that goes to VRS, taxes, and social security from the proposed 3%, it leaves them with 1.66. That in itself would be reasonable, but given they haven't had a merit increase in seven years, those employees you have, that you hire, that you're all proud of for providing services in this community, deserve more than that. They can't continue to get by on 1.66. So I'm asking you for an increased raise other than what Mr. Spohr has recommended. I know you can find a way to do that. I did send an email with some options for you to consider for different funding sources or things that we could consolidate or move that may save some money that would provide money for that. Likewise, what Trenace said, you know, I attended your spring retreat, and you all identified employee compensation as a top priority. I appreciate the recognizing of that, but when we look at the compression problem we have, Mr. Spohr in his report the other day, two weeks ago now, basically said it would cost $43 million to fix compression today. That's $43 million that your employees, current employees, are not getting in their check that they had signed up for when they took this job. If it's going to take $43 million to fix it today, we're not asking you for $43 million. We're asking you for some money to begin moving in that process. You started that last year. We'd like to see you move forward with that again this year. And Mr. Spohr's report also said somewhere around $1 million would address vertical compression, that also if you could find a way to do that, that would be wonderful. We thank you for everything you do. The city is a great place. There's a great investment in the community, the buildings, the structures, the roads, the things that are coming for us in the future. We'd like you to invest in the employees. Without those employees, those are just empty buildings. You can't have the greatest schools without the greatest teachers. You can't have the greatest economic development department without economic development employees that are top-notch. We need to grow the city, and investing in your employees is a way to get a direct feedback on your money. Thank you very much.
Next. Next speaker, please.
Steve Johnson and Kelly Kinnear.
Good evening. I'm not here speaking for myself. I'm here speaking for all the people in Virginia Beach that can't be here tonight because they must work two jobs to properly support their families. The people who have had not had a pay raise in a long time. The people who must pay these outrageous water bills, and the people who cannot afford another fee or tax increase in Virginia Beach. This year's budget proposes a tax increase for two major projects that have not yet been approved by the City Council. You're all going to raise taxes for the light rail and the arena, but you all have not agreed to do any of those projects yet. What will happen to the money collected for these projects if they're not approved? Will you refund us our money? Or will you find some other project to spend it on? The budget calls for spending $20 million on light rail cars. What will we get our money back if the light rail project is rejected by the FTA? But I'm not here to discuss these projects. I'm here to talk about this year's budget and the ever-increasing spending. There are two different opinions about the economy in Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads. One group predicts flat to moderate growth over the next few years, and the other group is predicting another collapse. I'm not an economist, but here is what I do know. Virginia Beach has reached a dubious achievement in Virginia. According to the website Real Track, which tracks real estate trends in the country, Virginia Beach has now got the highest number of home foreclosures in the state. That is families losing their homes. The Navy has announced upcoming shuffling of aircraft carriers. We now have five active carriers and one under construction in the shipyard. Once the Ford is completed, it will be assigned here in Hampton Roads. That's great news. But what the part everybody missed was the Navy will begin to transfer carriers from Hampton Roads to the West Coast and transfer West Coast carriers to Hampton Roads for refit in the shipyards. Then the Navy has said Hampton Roads will have four active carriers and one in the shipyards. We are going from five active carriers to four active carriers in the next two years. This will be devastating to the housing market and the tax revenues collected by the city. The State of the Region report says people who have lived in Virginia Beach more than five years are leaving, looking for better job opportunities elsewhere. No one knows what the future will bring, but with all the uncertainty, is this a time to raise taxes on our families? Our families are now overstressed. Most have not seen a pay raise in a long time, but due to healthcare costs have seen our paychecks fall considerably. Our water bills have steadily been going up. We've been cutting corners at every opportunity at home. Instead of raising our taxes, why isn't the city try cutting corners first? That's what we, the people, do. I encourage you to think of the families now struggling to keep our heads above water. Please don't throw us an anchor. Don't raise our fees and taxes. Thank you.
Kelly Kinnear.
Next speaker, please.
Kelly Kinnear and Barbara Powell.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, and other City Council members. My name is Kelly Kinnear. I'm the President of the Virginia Beach Council of PTAs and the mother of three amazing little boys. The Virginia PTA is the largest child advocacy group in the state of Virginia. We currently have over 300,000 members. Virginia Beach has one of the largest PTA councils in the state. That's a lot of constituents and a lot of children. Part of the PTA's mission is to speak on behalf of all children and youth before governmental bodies and other organizations. For over 100 years, PTA volunteers have used their time, energy, experience, and knowledge to bring about change in laws, policies, and programs for the benefits of our children. As you may already know, the Virginia PTA has partnered with the VEA to launch a campaign to put kids first. We are very excited to be partnering with such an amazing organization. The VEA and the Virginia PTA believe that the Commonwealth has no more precious resources than our children. We further believe the Commonwealth has the capacity and knowledge to truly transform the lives of Virginia's children by ensuring that every single child has access to high-quality public education from preschool to graduation. These beliefs are why we've joined together to create this campaign. The campaign, this past weekend, mobilized thousands of Virginians to demand that our elected leaders place the needs of Virginia's children first. The partnership between the VEA and the PTA is admittedly new to me and to our local PTA units. We have 87 of them. We're learning as we go, and we're taking it one step at a time. I will tell you that personally, I've learned more about the education system in Virginia than I ever thought possible. As the mom of three boys, my husband and I think that truly, education is number one. It's something we talk about every single day. I'm also part of a military family. We've lived in several different school districts, and Virginia Beach is by far our favorite. Although it's our favorite, we also recognize the struggles that our school system faces every single day. I am not an educator. I don't know the ins and outs of being an administrator or a teacher. I am, however, a mom, a PTA member, and a PTA Council President. This year in particular, I've had the opportunity to work with many of our schools and many of their administrators. I've seen positive things, but I've also seen struggles. Virginia is the ninth wealthiest state in the nation. Why are we drastically underfunding our schools again? Our teachers make over $7,000 less than the national average. How do we expect to attract the best and brightest teachers that our nation has to offer if we're not compensating them for their efforts? How do we expect our administrators, teachers, students, and parents to participate in and enjoy their educational experience when funding does not allow us to keep coming to school? Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Powell, Kelly Walker. Barbara Powell, Kelly Walker.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Sessoms and City Council members, as many of you know by now, my name is Barbara Powell. I am a Special Ed Teacher's Assistant at Hermitage Elementary School. I am also the Treasurer of the Virginia Beach Education Association and serve on the Board of the Virginia Education Association. I am here today to encourage you to find the means so all school employees can receive a 5% pay increase for the 2015-2016 school year. This would allow all employees to take home a 4% increase as the other 1% is already going to VRS. When I last addressed this body, it was about the rising cost of health insurance. We all know how that turned out. My take-home pay has actually decreased since January as compared to 2014. This past January, I was finally fortunate enough to attend Lobby Day in Richmond. I told my story to Senator Jeffrey McWaters, including that I have been with the Virginia Beach school system for 22 years and make just under $22,000. He responded, "You are practically a volunteer." Senator McWaters has a good point. I am not a volunteer, though. This is my profession, and I love it. Every day is a new challenge. I'm constantly encouraging students to do their best and strive for success. Personally, I am barely squeaking by. Other education support professionals bring home less than me. This pay increase is most needed and well-deserved. Please show your appreciation and support of all Virginia Beach public school employees by approving the proposed 5% pay increase for the 2015-2016 school year. I thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Kelly Walker.
We welcome you tonight.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, and City Council members. My name is Kelly Walker, and I've been a teacher for our school system for 23 years. I teach political science at the Global Studies and World Languages Academy at Tallwood High School, and I am also the Vice President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. Tonight, I would like to speak to the budget under consideration, tell my story of how the continual lack of funding from both federal, state, and local budgets has negatively impacted me, my students, and my school district. Since the Great Recession of 2007, funding to VBCPS has diminished significantly. I have not had a meaningful increase in pay in five years, and actually, I take home less pay today than I did last year. Last year, the lack of funding also prompted VBCPS high school teachers to teach an additional class. The addition of this class has meant that at one point, I had over 160 students enrolled in my classes. The state guidelines allow for 150. As you can imagine, grading papers, balancing differentiated instruction, and encouraging students with special needs is difficult when there aren't even enough desks in the classroom for the students. When teachers are overworked, the students lose. In the annual Quality Counts Report from the Education Week Research Center, data from over 40 indicators were collected on each state. Everything from class sizes to graduation rates to teacher pay were included in this report. Virginia's ranking in 2014 was fourth. Our 2015th ranking is 12th. We are heading in the wrong direction. I am also concerned that the impact of lack of funding has had on the teaching profession. Larger class sizes, state-directed testing demands, and increased evaluation tasks have resulted in significant increases in workload requirements. The lack of competitive pay and respect shown towards the teaching profession are already driving the best and brightest to more lucrative careers. The issue at hand is more than just a decision to fund the school board budget. It is a matter of valuing our education system and our children's future. I had the privilege of attending the Put Kids First Rally last Saturday, where thousands of concerned educators, support personnel, parents, community leaders, and students came together in Richmond to share their frustration at the lack of support we have received from you, our elected officials. For over an hour, concerned citizens sent the message that enough is enough. It is time to fully fund our schools. Stop giving lip service to our children's needs and do what is right. I offer to you that the budget submitted by the school board be included in this year's FY 2015-2016 budget. We all need to work together to protect the integrity of our schools and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dane Blythe and Neil Jeffries. Dane Blythe, Neil Jeffries.
If you could state your name before you started, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Sessoms or Dane Blythe.
Thank you.
And I'm actually here tonight to represent the Budget Committee of the Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance. So Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, members of council, our committee has reviewed this year's proposed budget, and we see no reason for a tax increase. We think we're taxed too much already. Please consider these facts. According to the Nonpartisan Tax Foundation, Virginia ranks 40th for Tax Freedom Day. In other words, we work the first 116 days out of the year just to pay taxes. Jared Walzak, a policy analyst with the Tax Foundation, said Virginia has consistently been a high-tax state, and I think that's something Virginians don't realize. On paper, Virginia's taxes may not look bad, but when you add up the individual and corporate income taxes, the Commonwealth's very high unemployment insurance taxes, the business, professional, and occupational licensing tax, sales tax, car tax, home properties taxes, it's a pretty cumbersome bill. And this year, Americans will spend more on federal, state, and local taxes than they will on housing, food, and clothing combined. For some local facts, median household income in Virginia Beach was $62,333 in 2006. It was $62,855 in 2013. So just to keep pace with inflation, that same family would need to earn $70,873 today. So in other words, Beach families have lost $8,000 in purchasing power over the past seven years. Our public utility bills, or the public works and public utilities, has increased significantly. This thing has become a recurring nightmare. And this year, we're looking at an average increase in our real estate property taxes, which I understand is a double-edged sword. It's a good thing, but also, it's another tax increase. It's less money in our pockets. And if you would like to pass a reasonable budget without increasing taxes, we recommend that you implement Councilman Moss's ideas. He knows how to do it. And on the topic of light rail, we strongly encourage you to vote against extending the tide into Virginia Beach. A group of citizen volunteers has been carefully analyzing the Virginia Beach Transit Extension Study, and we now understand why proponents of light rail are purposely ignoring this study. If you vote to extend light rail into Virginia Beach, even if it's just a town center, I think, or I predict, that the decision will go down as one of the most costly mistakes in the history of our region. So to conclude, please vote against an unnecessary tax increase, and we encourage you to read the executive summary of the transit study. We think you'll agree with us that the tide is unnecessary and best avoided. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Neil Jeffries. Neil Jeffries and Paul Simons.
Good evening, my elected officials, my paid employees, and most importantly, my fellow citizens. Recently, I had a letter to the editor in the Virginia Pilot you may have seen titled, "People, Not Things. We Need to Take Care of Our People." I'm not just talking to our good educators. I put with my wife, three kids through the public schools here. I'm not just talking to our policemen, our firefighters. I'm talking the rest of them, too. I happen to be happily married to a lady who's worked for the city for over 10 years. How many of you have been to the library? You've used her services. Okay? So let's think about it. Government is funded by taxes. That's the way we pay for it. I don't mind paying my fair share of wisely-used money. What I don't want to do is see money wasted. The mandate that government has is to use the money I give you wisely. So let's think about that. In the budget, as proposed, there are $323.1 million against three projects. Three projects. Think about that. We just heard $44 million will take care of the compression issue that our employees have had over the last seven, eight years in pay. $323 million available to reinvest elsewhere. The arena infrastructure off-site, the arena infrastructure site itself, and the transit extension alone, not counting another $20 million for cars. We don't do those because we don't need them. We don't need the light rail extension. Ridership in Norfolk has not sold any of us on that. We don't need an arena. We don't need a sports arena that brings in minimal part-time jobs, not good jobs, not manufacturing jobs, not the jobs like the 2,700 we lost when the Ford plant went out of town, not the jobs that we're going to lose when one of the aircraft carriers shifts West Coast. We need things that pay for our needs that we can get, not those light-paying things. So what I'm going to ask you is, avoid those three actions. $323 million in unnecessary expense. Oh, by the way, that way, we don't have to increase the per capita debt already on our citizens. We can pay the folks we have working what they should be getting, and we're money ahead. Let's be smart about this, folks. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Paul Simons.
We welcome you tonight.
Paul Simons.
Paul Simons. I'm here specifically to speak about light rail, and of course, I'm opposed to it. If you're on our City Council, I hope that you have not completely made up your minds about it. I know some people probably have, and I hope you don't have the arrogance to think that this is the best thing for the citizens of Virginia Beach, because I think it's a tremendous waste of money. And as some people have already said, the city of Norfolk's light rail... And as some people have already said, the city of Norfolk's light rail that ends at Newtown Road has been nothing but a money suckhole, and it just doesn't mount to anything good. You can't, you know, the projected ridership, I think, is 1,200 people a day, and you're talking about there being growth of business all along the rail line. I don't know if you've looked at the rail line; it looks like it goes through weeds and woods, and it's going to knock out some businesses already there. I think it's already been a waste of money. I think we need to put our money to the teachers. I think we need to put our money to the police departments and fund them, and to our fire departments, and to our roads. I think it's ridiculous that the intersection at Witch Duck Road has not been completed in four years. The referendum that the citizens voted for a few years ago was to study the light rail extension, and I think the study has shown pretty clearly that it will not be a economic good use of the people's money. So I would like to have asked the people in this room, if you don't want to have your money wasted on light rail, would you please stand up and show them? Thank you very much.
Leslie Jones. Leslie Jones and Catherine O'Rand.
We welcome you tonight.
City Council Mayor Sessoms and Mr. Spoor. My name is Leslie Jones. I stand before you very concerned. As a resident of Virginia Beach since 1961 and a voter since 1976, I do hope you will listen to me and others like me. Our projected family property assessment has jumped almost $12,000 this time around. Now add six cents per hundred to that total bill, and it takes a big bite out of our fixed income budget. Upon the constantly rising stormwater and trash fees, it could mean a significant increase in our taxes owed to the city of Virginia Beach. Our family budget just cannot stand this constant onslaught. Two cents of the recommended increase will be put towards light rail, costing at least $100 million per mile, and the actual cost may rise according to the ongoing study. The referendum put before the voters was like asking people if they want ice cream without presenting the actual cost. Sure, ice cream is great, but at what price? Now we find out that the cost per scoop will be $1,000 each, and we will be getting two scoops. That is not reasonable. That is not reasonable. The cost is just too much for us to bear. Light rail is a 20th-century mode of transportation that will cost too much to build and maintain. Alternatives? Innovations such as Uber and Lyft have now provided a free-market, 21st-century solution to our travel woes by connecting ride-sharing capabilities at each individual's fingertips. Other solutions will follow by clever and talented entrepreneurs that will not require government intervention. With the proposed remaining four cents of increase, city workers and retirees will be getting an increase in their paychecks by taxation force, whilst private workers and fixed-income persons will have no recourse but to continue to tighten their belts. The city's gasoline cost projections have gone down, so please use that for any increase in funding city workers from that savings. Do not raise taxes. Please, City Council and Manager, would you at least let us catch our financial breath? This subsequent recession has given the average taxpayer quite a beating. This tax increase is just unnecessary at this time, and will be a big burden on longtime residents like me and my family. Again, thank you for listening.
Next speaker, please.
Catherine O'Rand.
Next speaker, please.
Catherine O'Rand. No? Karen Neskowitz. Karen Neskowitz.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms and Vice Mayor Jones and Council members and Mr. Spoor. My name is Karen Neskowitz. I live in Homestead. You've already heard from me Friday. I sent you all an email. Thank you for your response, Mayor. I would rather not be here tonight. I'm not a public speaker. I'm very nervous. But I stand before you because I'm racked with frustration at the possibility that common sense regarding light rail will not prevail. The kind of common sense your constituents use when they're deciding whether or not to make a major purchase. Do I need it? Will it benefit me and my family? Can I afford the initial expenditure? What about the future annual expenses? Can I afford them? Can I afford additional debt and the interest expense that goes along with it? Those are the questions we ask ourselves, and if you apply them to light rail and taking the tide to town center, each question is answered no. No, we don't need it. No, we can't afford it. Less than 1% of the population will benefit from it. We don't have the money for the initial capital outlay or the resulting future annual expenses, debt, and interest. The vast majority of Virginia Beach residents would never use the tide. The same majority, the people who would have to pay for it, whose incomes have been stagnant or declining, can't afford it. The tax and fee increases and the additional debt that light rail in this budget will compound the financial burdens going forward. We don't have the money now. Where's it going to come from next year and the year after? Each of you are elected representatives. I ask you to do what is in the best interest of your constituents. Resist buying into light rail because the state's going to give you a 50% off coupon. And vote no. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Carolyn Walker. Carolyn Walker.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman. I have no credentials. Oh, this is nerve-wracking. I'm just a senior citizen trying not to outlive my savings. You people don't seem to have an idea of what it is out here for us retired people. When $30 on the public utility bill's gone up since December, where's that money coming from? We're capped. We call your office. Mr. Spoor says, "Let me explain it to you. It's this, this, and this. And if you're not happy, call your councilman, Mr. Urrin," which I did call and got the same response. It's like we women don't understand how it is to run a household. I live in 920 square feet. My utility bills are $200. My neighbors live in two-story houses, three bedrooms, two baths, and they don't pay as much as I do. What is the problem? There's no oversight. You get a bill for 62 days, then you get a bill for 77 days. There's no regularity so that we can do a budget. And when we went away with city decals, we were told we did that because y'all couldn't afford to pay somebody to be in that office for us to come in and pay for those decals. Now you want to buy a light rail? How about taking care of us? I'm sorry. I'm just trying to not go into my savings to survive. Thank you.
Coming down. Next speaker, please.
Tom Riley. Tom Riley. The next speaker is Damascus Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Tim Riley, Mr. Spoor, and City Councils, and my fellow citizens. I'm a 30-year employee, longtime Virginia Beach resident, who worked on one of the original pay plans to revamp the city pay scale. In fact, Mr. Moss, I have a letter here that you signed 21 years ago commending us for our action. What I would like to propose is creation of a city pay scale. I can't think of a bigger waste of time of having employees and teachers come in here every year and ask for our merit increases. You advertise a max value of every position. It's a $45% spread from entrance position to the maximum value. We're not asking for the maximum value of that position to be increased. But you advertise it when you bring in the high-quality teachers and firefighters and police officers, but the problem is, in the last seven years, you don't move. You're stagnant. We have five-year employees making the same as entrance employees. The United States military has a pay scale. For budgeting purposes, I would like to know how much I'm going to make at the 10-, 15-,20- year mark. That is not an unrealistic expectation. And you can budget for that. You budget for strategic growth areas. You budget for light rail. God knows why, but you could budget for city pay plan. And as a middle manager right now, firefighters, teachers, police officers cannot afford housing in the city of Virginia Beach. I have personally having dealt with two employees that have lost their homes. 10 years ago, that was never the case. Medium housing price has outpaced our city pay scale. I also worked for 18 years part-time in a second job for Centerra. I have never not gotten a merit increase. This can be done even in the toughest times. And lastly, you know, reinstating, we're throwing around millions and the B-word for the light rail. For God's sakes, put in $500,000 for the tuition reimbursement for city employees can increase their college fund. They're trying to do it on their own time. And lastly, Mr. Spoor, Mr. Mayor Sessoms, you always pride yourself in creating the best city in the world. Well, let's compensate our employees like that. Thank you.
Damascus Brooks.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Demetraus Brooks.
We welcome you.
It's good to speak to you tonight. I come before you today, and I say, if you're going to increase taxes, increase pay. You're taking more taxes, but you're not increasing a dollar. So the dollar is starting to mean nothing. The more taxes you take, the less the dollar means. I'm constantly was getting beat in my head from my wife wondering why is the water bill keep going up and we're not using no more water. So I understand what these people are saying to you tonight. I understand where they're coming from. We're paying, another thing I want to say is that before, you promised an arena and you increased taxes, but no arena came. So now you're asking to increase taxes again. How do we know this is not another smoke-and-mirror show? I mean, we're paying into something with false hope, so we believe we're getting something, but we're really not. I mean, if you're going to say you're going to give us something, let's have something. But if not, then let's go ahead and increase these people's pay. I mean, it's very hard to survive in this world today. You're the city of Virginia Beach. Your population alone is the highest population in the state of Virginia. You have a higher population than a lot of other major cities. So obviously, you're getting your tax money. That's the question. How are you spending it? Where is it going? I mean, if we're paying all these taxes, what do we have to show for it? We've still got a lot of potholes in the road. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
James Brady. And the next speaker is Teresa Brown.
We welcome you tonight.
Yes, sir.
We welcome you tonight.
I don't know everybody. I came here in 1961 when I joined the Navy. Came from New York. Came to one of the prettiest cities I'd ever seen, Virginia Beach. The beaches are beautiful, the people are beautiful, and they make you feel at home. But my simple idea is, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, I'm a husband, and I'm a grandpa. My kids, all six of them, the grandchildren, go to school. And when my daughter calls me up and says, "Dad, can I borrow 20 bucks?" I say, "What do you need 20 bucks for?" I've got to buy the kids supplies for school. Okay. Simple idea. A budget is supposed to improve the quality of life. My brother, before he died, had a favorite saying, "Learn to listen and listen to learn." Listen to the people. Learn what they're saying. Learn why they're saying it. Interesting, I was 20 years in the Navy, 20 years as a police officer. I'm the Senior Vice President of the Irish American Society. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Federal FOP. But guess what? I love Virginia. But tonight, when I came home from fishing, because it's done here, my wife is looking at a program. You know what it was? Property in Georgia. And she said, "If they keep going with the taxes the way it's raising now, we can't live here anymore." I'm retired. I gave the federal government 45 years of my life. I left New York, came to Virginia, and this is where I stayed because it's a beautiful place. You can continue that attitude and make it more beautiful. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Teresa Brown. And next speaker is Will Christopher.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Brown, and I'm here to discuss the light rail. First off, I want to make it clear that the citizens of Virginia Beach did not give you a mandate to build the light rail. Unless there was more than one referendum, 62.7% of the citizens expressed approval to continue to study light rail as a solution to the traffic problems. It was agreed to see what the extensive $6.6 million study would say. This study has indicated that light rail would not reduce traffic congestion now or in the future, but would increase congestion at specific intersections close to stations. It would not improve economic development along the line, since most of the area is already developed, and that ridership would be very low at 2,250 weekday boardings in the year 2034. It was suggested that we should do this now because the state has agreed to pay for 50% of the project. However, state money is not free. The citizens pay it to the state, and the state just sends it back. The projected cost is to be about $327 million, with a maintenance cost of $2.2 million a year. The state may offer $155 million, but any cost overruns will be a burden for only Virginia Beach residents to bear. Norfolk's overrun costs were about $200 million. How much will Virginia Beaches be? Light rail for Virginia Beach makes no sense. Even though we are the largest city in Virginia Beach, we don't have an urban area where the majority of the people go to work. Therefore, it could never draw enough riders to justify the cost. The $6.6 million study concludes that light rail for Virginia Beach is not a good investment. Therefore, it seems prudent that the wise choice would be not to vote for a capital expenditure that would only be a pretty status symbol and that would take money away from teachers and others' employee salaries. So why is our city council voting to build one?
Next speaker, please.
Will Christopher. And Robin Gager.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, City Mantraspor. I can empathize with many of the comments being made through this process regarding light rail. And by the way, I'm speaking on behalf of Hampton Roads Public Transportation Alliance this evening. I drive a vehicle, and I have a family, and I pay taxes, and I understand how all of it feels. Like any other major metro, they're dealing with this challenge, whether it was DC in the '50s and '60s, who were at $2 million, and dealing with sprawl, and the car, and traffic. and the car and traffic and choking development and so forth, to 2,000 lawsuits for the Golden Gate Bridge, to the Eisenhower Interstate System. The point is, is that we dealt with the same fear of change. We dealt with the same objections and resistance. And had we not made a bold choice at that time in those examples, then it would be likely like today of asking for more of status quo. And I know that's not what these good people are asking for. But what we're talking about is essentially bigger than a two- or three-mile extension into Virginia Beach. We're really talking about what do we want the future of Hampton Roads to look like, 2040, 2050? A really good comment made this evening was, how do we expect to grow? And we could apply that to transportation infrastructure. We know what it feels like. We know the pressure of $4.50 gas. When we were screaming for more public transit, we've got four regional surveys that all point to transportation as a number-one issue and increased transit and mobility options as a number-one request. We've got the business community, the chambers of commerce, every economic driver, our Department of Defense. All these groups are telling us that if we don't do something, that we're going to be a liability to ourselves. And of course, there was, the Virginia Beach referendum is much more than let's study it. It really is a look into the future of, yes, we will eventually move beyond roads. We'll still keep roads, but rail and track technology is the next logical step. Demographics have changed. Demand has changed. And again, I completely understand. Demographics have changed. Demand has changed. Technology has changed. We could afford to get away with a no vote, you know, a couple of years ago with this, but to do it today would really have some severe consequences. I mean, it's more of a global world now. It won't look good for Virginia Beach. It won't look good for Hampton Roads. It won't look good for Virginia in some context. And, you know, with population and urban density, population growth and urban density, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Robin Gager. Robert Dean.
We welcome you tonight. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Thank you for being open-minded and listening to everyone's opinion and for having these public hearings and allow people to share what matters most to them. I'm here tonight to talk about children. I'm here to talk about my children that are growing up here in Hampton Roads and my commitment to make sure that my children live in the best city possible in the United States and that the United States continues to be the best country in the world. And we're slipping at that. And you guys have a very tough job in front of you because we're watching what it looks like to slip and for people to not have as much money in their pockets. Yet if we continue to do nothing, we're going to see nothing but a continuation of the cycle. I think anything else would be deemed insanity. So I just got back from a four-day trip up in Washington DC where I was addressing members of Congress, as well as the U.S. High-Speed National Rail Association and various other folks. And it's okay if you want to talk while I talk. I was silent and I didn't boo anyone. But while I was there, I missed my two kids, my three-year-old son and my 10-month-year-old baby. I missed them. And instead of being with them right now, I chose to come here and be in front of you because I care about this so passionately that we get this right. You, as leaders, need to put the proper infrastructure in place to build in the next decade the infrastructure for the next century. If we don't get it right now, we will not get it right, and we will continue to see our lifestyle erode in the Hampton Roads region for as long as you're in office and probably for as long as I live here with my family. So I chose to take my time with my family tonight to come share with you. Not only is light rail important, it and other mobility options are about the only way out for improving our region and making it globally competitive. My wife is a schoolteacher in Virginia Beach. I understand what it's like not to have raise year after year of two children. My wife's a schoolteacher. But we have to invest in our future. We have to invest in our kids. This is absolutely essential, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert Dean and Tom Velez.
Robert, we welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening. My name's Robert Dean. This is a watershed year for Virginia Beach. This is a watershed budget for our city government. How trite and predictable this wordsmithing giving to city council members in the budget's executive summary. Tonight, I won't be offering my insight into the budget numbers as I have done so for many years, wasting away hours of lost sleep only to have my words fall on deaf ears. Tonight, I'll be more philosophical in my remarks. Has it ever crossed the mind of 10 of the 11 members of the city council that first in line is their responsibility to the taxpayers in the city instead of the citizens being a subordinate position to the city's bureaucracy? Apparently not, as evidenced by your lack of conviction and ability to give the city manager his marching orders to bring in a tax and fee-neutral budget so that the citizens you represent beyond the special interest groups at the Town Center Food Court and the low-wage industry known as the oceanfront won't have to sacrifice their standards of living to improve those that those who fork over tens of thousands in campaign contributions to influence your vote? Subsidizing these corporate welfare groups flies in the face of capitalism and free enterprise and denigrates the true role of government when it takes our tax dollars and picks winners and losers. And then there are the proverbial scare tactics you try to intimidate the hard-working families using the public safety employees as your pawns. Your counterpart over at the Headshed do the same, saying, "We're going to lose teachers and our education system is going to crumble if we don't spend more and more and raise taxes and fees in order to get better results." And while members of the school board offer the wringing of hands and the gnashing of teeth in their quest to force you to raise taxes, they completely ignore the fact that 40% of our student population is eligible for free and reduced lunches. Laying the foundation for the continued expansion of the medical complex at Prince and Commons translates to what? Are you saying the private sector isn't willing to bring forth an infusion of investment capital to fund the project? How disingenuous. Unlike the Sportsplex, if they build the medical complex, they will come and without any tax dollars taken by force by this council. The $6.6 million draft environmental impact statement, all 3,780 pages, on the issue of light rail, a subject that I've been studying since 1988, and I keep coming up with the same results. This project is a moronic exercise in fiscal insanity. This council is now considering the city manager's recommendation of taking Norfolk's Tide light rail from Newtown Road to the so-called Town Center. Did Fred Flintstone come up with this dinosaur era? Did Fred Flintstone come up with this dinosaur-era harebrained idea? If so, Fred should be the new project manager at Hampton Roads Transit. And just how many dinosaur stakes did he offer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Dean. We appreciate it for being fair to everyone.
To you.
Next speaker, please. Thank you. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Continuing on with Robert Dean's words, first of all, for a change, let's be perfectly honest with ourselves. Beyond Mr. Moss, how many of you sitting council members, especially the mayor of the city of Town Bank, have actually sat down and gone through at least 100 pages? Ms. Wilson, you're a numbers cruncher, aren't you? And Ms. Hammond? What is it about the light rail proposal that makes it so finger-licking good? Is it the 40% cost overruns or the fact that it will absolutely not reduce traffic congestion? Let me repeat that. No reduction in traffic congestion. And before the first shovel of dirt is turned, you have already thrown away a minimum of just under $50 million that has to be figured into the capital cost of the project. And then there's the snake oil salesmen who say it's going to spur economic development and protect the environment. No, it won't. And that's a fact, Mr. Davenport, just, that's a fact, Mr. Davenport. Just read the D E I S. And if you don't believe me, knowledge is a powerful tool to gain wisdom. And the fact that you want to use light rail for your social engineering thought process to get us out of our homes and into high-rise living through your newly-created multimillion-dollar strategic growth office is absurd. What is it about family gatherings, backyard barbecues, that you find so offensive? Is it because all of us want our own small piece of the dirt we can call our own and share with friends? The deadline for public comments is May 5, and you want to increase our taxes to place an order for these fantasy trolleys without even hearing the results from the public you're supposed to represent and the Federal Transportation Administration? How absurd. I'll tell you what's insulting and absurd. Any notion of increasing our taxes and fees. And if you can't stomach giving the city manager his marching orders to bring in a tax-neutral budget, then you need to walk away from your seat on council. Another tax-fee increase? No thanks. You're creating a running-of-the-bulls with these tax-increase nightmares, and I, for one, am tired of getting gored by score. I'd also like to say for myself on the water bill, I own a duplex. I pay the water for both sides. I am getting billed $340 to $350 every two months. $40 of which is the water bill. That's all for water. The rest of it is all this other crap. I can't afford it, sir. Thank you.
No, no, no. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marlena Castelluzzo.
Next speaker.
Yeah, she's coming.
We welcome you tonight.
Mayor, City Council, takes me a little longer. Don't have a meniscus surgery if you're not 17 years old, I found out.
Bless your heart. That is tough stuff.
My name is Marlena Castelluzzo, and I'm Chair of the Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance, but I'm here tonight speaking as a citizen. Recently, I read comments from another organizational leader saying that they felt sorry for city council, having to sit each budget process and hearing from the same organizations and the same citizens time after time. I take issue with that position because I feel sorry for the citizens and the organizations who have to come here to remind council what your duties and responsibilities are to the citizens of Virginia Beach every year, every budget process. That's who I'm feeling sorry for. I also feel sorry, once again, that fire, police, and educators are being blamed for the tax increases. Each one-cent increase equals $5.1 million in revenue. I can cut four cents tonight from that budget, from that tax increase, simply by removing light rail at that $20 million price tag. So that takes four cents right there. And I'm certainly not an economist, and I'm certainly not a CPA, but I just removed four cents from that tax increase. And I also feel sorry for the people that have to come here time after time and relive their difficult lives before council, before public, to let you know the impact that these tax increases have. And as a resident of Kempsville and a long-term school system employee, I have come before this council and said the exact same thing time after time. Don't tell me that you are giving me a raise via a tax increase. I am giving myself that raise, and every time it's to the negative because you put a little money in this pocket and you take a lot more out of the other pocket. So any fire, police, and educator that lives in Virginia Beach and has property in Virginia Beach, they are giving themselves the raises when raises come, and it's always to the negative because the increases on all the other things outweigh what little increase we get in salaries. So you need to look at this budget. You need to not have a tax increase, and you need to look at the proposals that Mr. Moss has presented. Thank you.
Hope you feel better. Next speaker, please.
Reed Greenham. Reed, Reed Greenham.
We welcome you tonight.
And Frank Puckins.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Reed Greenham. I'm a longtime resident of Virginia Beach. But I'm here tonight not to talk for myself, but to talk for three native Virginia Beach residents. That would be my wife, who was born in Virginia Beach, but is a fear of public speaking, who is outraged by this budget. That would be my daughter Marina, who has grown up in Virginia Beach all of her life. And that would be Violet, my soon-to-be-born first grandchild inside my daughter Marina, which is why my wife and daughter are at the OBGYN right now, where they would be here to share with you their outrage and why they are upset by what you're planning to do. First of all, I'd like to get rid of this issue about the referendum on light rail. What a bunch of crap. Yeah, the ballot question said, "Build the Tide." But Mayor, your bank contributed $25,000 to put up this Move Hampton Roads thing that says, "Study Light Rail," ran $479,000 worth of ads to confuse the voters into thinking that this was about studying and not building light rail. Like Mr. Dean and others, I actually read the entire environmental impact study. Everybody's telling you the truth. It doesn't do any of the things you think it's going to do, and let alone the fact that it's only for three miles of what you're talking about building, Mr. Spore. And it doesn't even contain the benefits of going to the oceanfront for bus rapid transit. But that's not really the thing that you need to be focused on. You need to be focused on what these people are telling you. I heard a guy from the light rail, the lobbyist who went up there for high-speed rail. He called you leaders. You're elected representatives to do what we tell you. And I'm here telling you again what it is you need to do. Okay, so here's the point on the whole thing. I read the study. Light rail is a mistake. But you know what's interesting about what's in the study? Because I could give you facts and figures, and you probably won't pay any attention because I've learned I give you too much information. So I'm going to make it simple for you. What will you not find in the $6.6 million study? You won't find what Hampton Roads Transit has in their annual report because it's not in this study. The cost for Hampton Roads Transit to operate all of their buses is $89 an hour. The cost for Hampton Roads Transit to operate light rail is $328.23 an hour. The buses, for that same $89, moved 15 million boardings. The light rail moved 1.5 million. Obviously, buses are a better investment if you need to move people along that corridor and remove traffic. But here's the problem, Mr. Mayor and the rest of my city council. The $6.6 million study that we waited so long for, that I read all these pages, it doesn't actually compare buses.
Mr. Greenham, your time has expired.
It doesn't give you the data.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
So anyway, no to light rail.
Thank you.
Frank Puckins. Frank?
Yes, sir.
Three minutes.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
How you doing, people? I've been here before.
It's good to see you again.
Yeah, I'm still alive. Ain't that a bitch?
Yes, sir.
Why am I here? I've been coming to these meetings for over 30 years, believe it or not. Most of the time, I keep my mouth shut and I listen. Lately, eh, not so much. The reason why I'm here is because I've been hearing the same thing every time the mayor turns around and says, "Not only you, other mayors before you. We need this to improve the services of the city of Virginia Beach." So they raise the taxes. And then the next year, they said, "Well, we need more services for the city of Virginia Beach." And they raise the taxes. And you keep doing this over and over and over again, every year. And you know what happens, though? I live in Thalia Manor. It's a nice little quiet neighborhood. I don't have no sidewalks. I have no curbs. I have a gutter that runs down the road that carries the water to, it's one of the streams that carries it out into the Chesapeake Bay because it's definitely not on any kind of sewer system. I had one of those little, you know, the gutters, concrete gutters in there? In front of my house, one of them was cracked and had picked up from the roots on the property nine years before somebody came out there and fixed it. I seen, first time about six years ago, I actually saw a street sweeper. I didn't even know the city had them. One came down, one came down Rumford Lane, and I was totally amazed. Anyways, getting back to the budget. You want to build light rail. And the whole purpose of you building this light rail is to consolidate business along a quarter Virginia Beach Boulevard so that you can raise buildings up into the air and you can pack people in like sardines. Well, one of the unexpected consequences of doing that is the fact that you're going to have buses that you don't supply now, but you're going to have a light rail, you're going to have buses dragging more people in. If they're going to turn around and drive somewhere, get out of their vehicles, jump in the bus, ride and drive somewhere, get out of their vehicles, jump in the bus, ride down the light rail, and then go on, do this thing, get back on the buses again, and go back to wherever they came from. I went down to VDOT. I found out that traffic coming down 264 Virginia Beach Boulevard comes from 64, north and south. I call it north and south. You call it east and west, you know. But it's actually... anyways, beside the point. You got 200... 600... 623,000 coming in one way and 360... 3,641... you got 9,000 cars coming into the city.
Sir, your time has expired.
I'm expired already?
Yes, sir.
I didn't even get started. Oh, my God.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Carlton Wright.
Ma'am?
Mr. Carlton Wright.
That's it?
Mr. Wright is the next speaker.
Next speaker? Okay, thank you.
I guess you should.
Will you just walk me in?
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That was fast. I guess this is a light rail. Am I at the right meeting? I come here to ask another question, reference to some... is that...
This is the budget hearing.
Budget hearing, okay. My name is Carl Wright. I'm a resident here in the great city of Virginia Beach, and I have a question in regards to public safety. In the light of things that have been going on throughout the country in regards to our police departments and the cameras, cameras, the uniform police cameras, where are we at in our budget here in our city of Virginia Beach? Do we intend to help our police department invest in these cameras, or is that a thought, or is that not? I want to hear from all of you good folks because I think it's important, in light of all that's happening, and we have one of the greatest police departments in the country, but we want to make sure that we're able to keep them safe. And I think that the cameras will help. Is there someone that can...
No, this is a public hearing. We're listening right now to you, Mr. Wright, and I hear that you want... you're recommending cameras for the police department. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll make a note of that, and we thank you.
Okay. Well, I was just asking also if has there been any discussion on the police cameras?
We'll await the police chief's recommendation.
Okay. Well, I thought he'd already contacted you, but nevertheless, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Catherine Iran.
We welcome you tonight.
Oh, I don't think you do, but go ahead.[1183.01][1183.01][laughter] I... I am Catherine Iran. I'm a taxpayer here in the city of Virginia Beach. I just don't understand what's wrong with you guys. I... I have a budget that I have to live in, and I have to... can you please pay attention to me or at least act like you're concerned? Or you want to hear what I got to say? All night, you've just been turning and doing everything else. I'd appreciate your attention right now.
Who are you referring to?
You, sir.
Ma'am, I've been paying attention. Everyone's been speaking. I've been...
Really?
Yes, ma'am, I have.
You haven't acted that way.
And I will also say, I try to respect everyone that speaks. I would ask you to do the same.
Well, I don't see any respect on your behalf. You, sir, have had no respect for us as voters. You just disregard what everyone here has told you tonight. You haven't listened to anyone. It's like you don't care because the idea's already been made up, the votes are done, and you've already put in the budget two cents to buy these light rail cars that we haven't even voted on, or you, my friend, have not even voted on, on council yet. Have you? You guys have not put that vote forward, whether it's going to occur or not, yet we're already investing money into something? So you're telling me the vote's already done? It's already in the bag? That's what you're telling me. You're already putting money into the budget. We, the people, really were tricked by you guys. Tricked. Everybody. They... if they actually knew... if you're so confident that the people want light rail, put it out there on the referendum now. Let us all vote on it again.[1272.47][1272.47][applause] That's what I'm saying. And, sir, how much are you getting in the backside on that? How much are the other people that are going to be voting? You guys were part of Town Bank, the whole mess, and yet you should have recused yourself from these votes, but you continue to move forward in it. You don't think we care? You don't think we're watching? Remember, I'm a voter, and I know how to... I know how to bring people together. Every one of you work for us. You work for me. I don't work for you.[1303.33][1303.33][applause] And I know how to knock on doors. I've done it for many a campaign, and I will do it if I have to do it against you. You will listen to us. We, the people, don't want light rail. Period.[1317.83][1317.83][applause]
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Jeff Brown.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and City Manager. I came here tonight to speak on behalf of my civic league, but I thought this was a stormwater meeting. And when I read it a few weeks ago in the paper and put it in my phone, I showed up and it was for the budget. Kind of glad I came anyways. Well, we're glad to have you. And it is budget-related. I'd like to propose a special fund after hearing all of the people here tonight. I'm very active in my civic league, and I'm on our Waterways Commission. I'm a zone captain for Clean the Bay Day. I grew up in Norfolk, moved to Virginia Beach about 17 years ago. Growing up in Norfolk, when you wanted to do something that was fun, neat, something to do outside, it was a no-brainer. You went to Virginia Beach. And I don't regret moving here. I'd hate to see Virginia Beach go the way Norfolk's gone. It's not the city I grew up in. But in any case, I came here tonight talking about littering. Can you tell me how much revenue the city has made off of summons written for littering? Probably not much because it's not enforced. If you guys would enforce that or work with the magistrates to enforce that, you would find yourselves with a lot of revenue. And I would like to see it in a special fund to pay these people what they deserve. And, you know, being active and picking up hundreds of cigarette butts all the time, doing our neighborhood cleanups and the Clean the Bay Day stuff and Lynnhaven River Now stuff, and then, you know, if a fine officer writes a ticket and they go to court and, "No, I'm sorry," and they get off, they're not sorry. They just care about the inside of their car being clean. You'd help beautify the city. You'd create a revenue to pay these people what they deserve. And, you know, these people, if they get hit in the wallet, they might quit smoking and be better for their overall health care of themselves and the healthcare system. I'm not prepared to speak here tonight, but I felt I needed to.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Diana Howard.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you so much. My name is Diana Howard, and I'm the vice chair of the Virginia Beach chapter of the Hampton Roads Tea Party, and we are taxed enough already.[1471.21][1471.21][applause] And I don't know why we have to come here year after year to tell you not to raise taxes and fees because that seems to be the only thing you know how to do to balance a budget. Somebody needs to learn how to balance a budget around here. I don't understand how the city manager can say in the executive summary, and I quote, "We know families are hurting. The recession was not kind to families or government. Just as revenues are down for our city, they are down for our families, too. Medium household income is down since 2010. That's not compared to inflation. It is simply down, lower than it was in 2010. Inflation, even at a modest 2% a year, just makes it worse," end quote. Really? Do you believe... do you understand these words? Do you believe them, or are they just words? Because I don't understand how you can raise our taxes and say that and not understand. You know, I had a flood. Actually, I had two floods in my house this year, right? And I had to pay... my deductible was 3% of the value of my house. Thank God my insurance company doesn't value my house as high as you all do because we just got a sesquifier. You can buy a house in Chesapeake, more of a house, more property and everything, cheaper than you can in Virginia Beach, I'll tell you. So you just raised our taxes by increasing our assessments, and now you want to put a tax increase on that. You know, I just simply don't understand it. And you're going to give us the same excuse, "Our Virginia Beach that our taxes are lower than the rest of the region." Like I said, our assessments here are higher than the rest of the region, so that doesn't make sense, right? This budget... this budget is driving light rail. That's what it is, right? Everything you have in this budget doesn't need to be there for light rail. You have in there raising the automobile license, almost $2 million for multi-modal transportation special revenue fund. Real estate taxes, over $21 million. The restaurant meal tax, $2.5 million. And you're taking money from other sources, or $6.5 million. That's over $32 million for light rail. Just take light rail out of the budget, and there's no need for a tax increase.[1620.16][1620.16][applause] A million dollars a mile is not reasonable. We are not New York City. I come from New York. You do not have the density of New York, nor do we want that density here, really. We do not have the job base of a Washington, DC. This is insane. Do not do light rail.[1645.54][1645.54][applause]
Next speaker, please.
Venus Marshall.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, all my council people, how are you? I'm Venus Marshall. I'm from the Kempsville district of the city of Virginia Beach. I'm here in reference to the increases in our fees and taxes on our property. And I've been following you, Mr. Moss, on Facebook, and wanted you to kind of give a little bit of an overview as to what you're opposed to in reference to these taxes because I am like you all. I'm for paying my taxes, but I don't want to increase, as you all don't on your properties as well. So if I can hear from Mr. Moss just a little bit on what you... okay, budget hearing? Okay, we're here for... I am opposed to fees and increase in our taxes.
We're just listening to you.
Oh, absolutely. So I guess I'll just sit here and we'll talk. So actually...[1707.75][1707.75][laughter] Yeah, so actually, like I said, I have been following you, Mr. Moss, and others on Facebook and get communications from you, from various of you, in reference to the increases in our fees throughout the city and our taxes. And as a citizen, as many of these people have already said, we are taxed enough, and we're willing to pay the taxes that we are due or we're owing, but we're not willing to pay these increases that to fund whatever projects you all have come up with. My concern is that, like City Manager Spore, as the woman just alluded to, my native New Yorker, I'm from New York as well, and I am opposed to all of this. We have enough going on in this city that we need to fund without having to make sure that these citizens are overburdened with taxes. So as you are listening, I guess I just made myself heard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.[1765.54][1765.54][applause]
All the speakers.
That's all the speakers? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being out here tonight. We enjoyed your comments, and we will be moving forward on deliberation of the budget in the days and weeks ahead. Thank you again for being here. We'll adjourn.[1780.04][1780.04][applause]